Go ahead and start the live.
Okay, I know we've got like four or five minutes.
We have zero attendees anyway.
Online.
That's interesting. That's slow.
All the latency between it.
Look at my hand.
Yeah.
Cause it has a wi- it has a wireless.
We've lost Henry. We'll be doing this all night.
This is fascinating.
Not as fast as you used to be.
That's how we see you.
It's like watching a speaker a long ways away that their lips and their words are not quite together.
Yeah. Don't try to read your own lips.
Yeah. I don't know, I have a cheap internet connection. It looks pretty good to me.
I looked over there and I thought, who's that guy on the end?
Eva's not here, so I figured my little smush.
He said he was gonna go remote.
I don't know, I thought he was gonna go, but he has your number, so.
Yeah.
Just a reminder to the audience, make sure you sign in sheet out.
Perfect. Alright, fine. I'm gonna pre-apologize if I cough in the middle. I don't have rhona, I just have allergies. Just the allergies. What's that? Oh yeah, molds are starting right now? Yeah, so. And I live in an old house, so. There you go. I need to wait one more minute. Any sign of Lance? Lance pop up on there?
Oh, we have a chorus.
Yeah.
More importantly, we have an odd-numbered chorus.
Yeah, that's even better. Well, I've got 6:30. I don't know about anybody else? So, 6:30, we're gonna go ahead and open Planning Commission meeting for November 2nd, 2020. And we'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see Lance is here.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good.
Alright, Angela, are we recording to do a roll call? Okay.
Chairman Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Walthius?
Here.
Commissioner Gatchel?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Corn?
Here.
Commissioner Unger?
Here.
And Commissioner Journey called me. She will be up.
Okay. So, at this time, if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak on anything that's not on our agenda for tonight, that's not been printed out, um, if there's something on your mind, now would be the time to step forward. And this is not on anything we're doing tonight.
Correct?
Okay, come on forward to the table, state your name and address.
You can sit right here?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'm James Ward, and I am a homeowner of this subdivision that's right above us here, Lake Point subdivision. And the address is 6339 Lake Point Way, lot number 18. I kind of came into some, uh, un- no, um, not-so-good circumstances and, and it's really not, um, city's fault or anything like that, but I've learnt that, um, even though I hired an architect, who's actually drawn, I know, four homes up there, all of them are built. And, uh, he was our architect. He was the builder's main architect and, um, had built this subdivision. And so, we felt very comfortable that that was gonna go. So, we get the plan done, we spent several months doing all these fires and everything else. If you can, I can't even begin to tell you. But we finally got it done and we brought it in for permit, uh, yesterday, I think it was, or the day before yesterday or something. And, uh, we came across one code that was, that hung it up, that basically shot the plan completely out of water. And that is the slope of the roof. Apparently, in Sweet Home, uh, there's a code that's been adopted that, uh, you're not allowed to build anything less than a 312 slope on your residential, R1 zoning. And the closest clarification I could get to why that was adopted as a code was, they felt it was, had something to do with manufactured homes possibly, they really didn't have a clear answer. One was, it rains a lot. And, you know, I've built all my life, I'm, uh, 65 years, at this, you know, life of mine and 50 years in the trades. So, you know, we built flat-top homes in modified A-frames in Lake Tahoe for years with flat-rots on it. You know, and, you know, as long as the architect can draw the plan and it holds us no load and all of that, and they put the proper coating on there, you know, it's gonna work. And it worked for years. And so, trying to get to the main point here, we spent a lot of money. We thought we were covered because we had an architect that built several, that drew several homes up there. And it comes to find out, every single home he built up there had, they were in, they were wrong. They had one-half per foot rise per, so they have a slope up there that's even less than mine, that I had a 112. They had half of that, okay? They had two homes built up there like that, that went through. And being really honest with you, it's a representation of the city, um, you know, because we felt it was a contemporary home place of purchase, a home. And, uh, we liked a contemporary look. It's a new modern look. And those slopes tend to go along with a contemporary house. And so, we wanted something like that. And thus, we went down that road. And then, just to find out last hour, that, you know, even though, I gotta say, the gal up front, my name's Molly, she did hand us earlier on, you know, paperwork. But, you know, I'm hired of, I hired an architect, okay? I'm not too concerned with going through all the documentation and trying to do his job for him, okay? So, what I'm getting at is, I would like to put it on record that this 312 pitch is absolutely, there is no safety, um, reason for that at all. Now, that would fall under some CCNR regulation, you know, if you were a subdivision nail and they wanted to maintain a certain look, I could see that. But this 312 code basically cuts out, um, you know, some of these contemporary home designs. And I had a really beautiful design, and it was one whole long slope, uh, that was 63 feet in length, and I had ended up with a 15-foot-high, you know, vaulted ceiling in our living room. But to go to a 312, that would be 25 feet tall, okay? So, it's just, it was impractical. It just basically shot our plan completely down. Now, since then, you know, I'm getting it redrawn with a 312. But I'd like to put it on record that I think that code, if it was developed through some manufacturing code, like they worried about manufactured homes coming in here, whatever the reason is, I got added into it, that I think it's due diligence to look into it. And to get it kicked out, because it's really, uh, in my eyes, it's not a safety issue. You know, it's, it's a means and method in, of construction to make sure that it's waterproof and all of that. That should be the customer's right. And, um, you know, the building department is here to make sure things are being built safe, you know? And there is a need for that. But that is one item that really doesn't fall into that category. And, uh, so I'd like to be at least, since I had this, since I lost some money on it, I might as well be the one to say something about it, and then maybe you can hit it, some do some due diligence. And, um, you know, find out why that even got added in. Because it could be just some old, you know, thing that's put together when people weren't thinking it out real clearly, and we can just get it off of there. And this home could be, this city could venture into some more contemporary-type designs that that allow for that sort of thing. Because those two homes up there, even though they're one-half of an inch per foot rise, which ain't much, I wouldn't even do that, but they did it. They look very contemporary and they're very nice. And so, it kind of sells that whole thing. And that's, uh, that's part of your city. That's under your, you have adopted that, it's your. So, I just wanted to say that. I want to put it on record that the 312, if we can look into that, and I know you're doing some code changes, I think that's one of them that needs to get, you know, the work done.
Well, thank you so much for your time. That's something, you know, we don't know a lot of these things until people bring them up. And yeah, we are looking at going through code revisions right now. So, we can look into that and maybe, you know, enlighten ourselves as well to why it is what it is.
You know, and I quickly drew up some things for our, I'm not using an architect anymore, I'm using our engineer now, but I drew up some things and this gentleman here gave me some ideas. And, uh, I actually gonna save a little bit of money, but it's gonna balance out by what I've lost with the architect. So, but the main thing is, we, we're okay. We're gonna build it with a 312 pitch on it, and we change around and make it look nice, and we're happy with it. But I do think that is one code that really needs to be, you know, just, it's, it's not, I don't know how, but I might be honest with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would suggest that we ask Joel to research that and just give us a report next month.
Okay. Yeah, under Angela's, yeah.
I think we've already, we've already looked into it. Unless you know why that was put in, we talked about it before and couldn't really find a reason of why that rule is there. I, I will say that some, a lot of communities have these provisions and, and design standards in their code.
Yeah.
And they're allowed to do that. Usually, it's because they have a certain, some kind of look that they think is appropriate
Right.
for the community.
I know that some cities have done it in order to prevent people from coming in and putting composite shingles on a, you know, anything less than a 312, and then they don't work. You have to go to metal roofing.
And, and our best guess was that maybe somebody looked at, was looking at manufactured homes and was thinking, what is the, the problem here? Oh, the pitch of the roof is often an issue, so we'll require that. And, well, we might as well do that for everybody.
Right.
Just to make it, uh, more easier to deal with. So, I, for whatever reason, i- i- I guess it's not all that important what the reason is. The, the important thing is that there is an opportunity to change it, if that is what the commission would like to recommend. And that's certainly within your authority to recommend a change to that. And obviously, for this gentleman, it's, it's a bit late.
Right.
To do that. But since we're already going through the code overhaul anyway, it's not like that would add much of a burden. It would just add to that, that, we would add that as a discussion item when we get to that.
So, with, with a little research between now and, and December's meeting, is that something that we could maybe look at? A little more in-depth as far as, at least when it was adopted?
We, we can look and see what we can find.
Yeah.
And, and if you can back down that, sure. Um, as for discussing it as a part of the code, I would just recommend that when we get to that, those chapters in our review of the, the proposed draft code, which hopefully we'll have those soon for you, I would suggest talking about it at that time when we review those chapters.
Sounds good. Alright. Thank you. So, looking at the Planning Commission meeting minutes from last, oh, two months ago. It's just skipped October. Somebody have anything in the meetings that they saw needed to be changed or corrected?
There's some typos on page four. Down the middle, or towards the bottom half. Henry stated he feels more comfortable, more conditions need to be stated instead of states. And Parker wants to see 42nd Avenue roughed in for.
Yep.
And then I guess I didn't understand what, that same line, Phase 1 Construction purchases. Is that purchases supposed to be there? Is that a typo or whatever? And then the next line down, for temporary use.
I think it should be purposes.
Supposed to be?
Purposes. Instead of purchases. Should be purposes. That one was to divert the construction traffic out of the existing duck hollow.
As long as we're being perfectionist. Sometimes we refer to a last name, call somebody by their last name, sometimes a first name. Probably we could have some standard usage. For example, on page five, but this is pretty much throughout. Got Parker and Eva. Probably either ought to go by last names or first names or full names consistently.
And that, page five, under the October Planning Commission meeting, it says Henry voted. Corn seconded. Did he? He made a motion instead of voted, or what? What did, what did, I guess I don't understand that sentence either.
Oh, it probably would have been Henry ma- made a motion, Corn seconded.
What was the unanimous vote? Was it for or against? We're being hard on you.
Sorry, Angela. Show this on top of your leaky roof at home.
I got all those.
Alright. With changes? My motion to accept the minutes with the changes made.
I make a motion, accept the minutes with the ch- minute with the corrections as stated.
I second the motion. Angela?
Roll call. Senator Parker?
Hi.
Commissioner Walthius?
Hi.
Commissioner Gatchel?
Hi.
Commissioner Stevens?
Hi.
Commissioner Corn?
Hi.
And Commissioner Unger?
Hi.
No names and no names.
Alright, we will move on to our public hearing tonight. We're gonna open discussion for application CU-20-05. What was that? 648? The applicable substantive, substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be given direct, directed toward the criteria described in or other criteria in the Plan or Land Use Regulation, which the people, which person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. So, we have application, again, CU-20-05. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a two-bedroom, two-bath, multifamily apartment complex consisting of nine units and 18 onsite parking spaces. A property line adjustment application was submitted and approved by the administrative decision on July 28th, 2020, combining lots 4,700 and 4,735. The property is in the residential medium-density R3 zone. Per the Zone Map Application ZMA-20-02, approved by the Planning Commission on July 13th, 2020, and the Ordnance Number Bill 11 for 2020, approved by the City Council on September 8th, 2020. In the residential medium-density R3 zone, multifamily units are permitted as conditional use under Municipal Code 17 dot 30 dot 30B. So, in regards to this, um, do any of the commissioners have a personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
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 Uh, any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Okay, ex parte information?
No.
No.
Just acquainted with the area. Years ago, I was here when we considered similar issues.
No? Alright, well, I will turn it over to Angela for a staff report.
I've read the summary of the application. I'm just gonna add some. We did have some comments coming in. And I'm trying to address some of those with them. So, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for two-bedroom, two-bathroom, multifamily apartment complex consisting of nine units and 18 onsite parking spaces. In residential medium-density R3 zone, multifamily units are permitted as conditional use per District 1730, um, 30B. Attachment C includes two public comment letters. Both letters are concerning about the drainage from the property. For the staff comments, stormwater runoff will be contained onsite in the controlled outlet to the drainage system in 23rd Avenue. There is a local unnamed stormwater creek channel that runs along the east and north side of the lines as the property toward 23rd Avenue. Most, but not all of the channel is on the two adjacent properties. It has an upstream source near 27th Avenue and 28th Avenue. On the Sweet Home municipal wetlands inventory, the channel refers to the name of CC1. CC1 is Cotton Creek, the first upper reach of the drainage, refers to the LWI wetland characterization sheets that indicate dominant wetland vegetation soils, location hydraulic, hydrologically, and other drainage channel. I know the residential apartment complex would like reassurance that the channel flow will be maintained, cleared of brush, and any debris that accumulates. The city would recommend that the drainage is cleared as needed. When I am done, if where available, the staff engineer is here to answer any questions regarding the wetland and drainage recommendations. Also, per the public work comments, there is drainage ditch on the east and east sides of the property that conveys runoff from Mountain View Road to 23rd Avenue and does not have any easement. Public Works desires 20-foot public utility easement for this drainage. This may require moving the building's dust slightly. If the developer pipes the drainage, then Public Works would be willing to consider a narrower easement on the east side. The parking lot is an acceptable use of this easement. Um, again, the staff engineer is here to answer any questions regarding this. Staff recommends the following conditions of approval pertaining to the drainage only to the concern. The applicant shall work with the city of Sweet Home to create a maintenance plan to keep the creek channel cleared of debris and create a public utility easement to accommodate the stormwater drainage and maintenance. The applicant will comply with all applicable state and city requirements for the stormwater, stormwater drainage and drainage. The public comment letters also express traffic and parking concerns. For the staff engineer's comments, the apartment building will be accessed in 23rd Avenue only, even though the property also has drainage on Mountain View Road. Street access is to 23rd Avenue, a single driveway entry entering to the south end of 23rd Avenue. The sidewalks around the property drainage of the public site will be disneyed. There are two direct directions, north and west, for traffic to flow from the apartment. The 23rd Avenue and Ironwood are doable, with no other lots available. There's an apartment next door to this project and two single-family attached townhouses located on 23rd Avenue also. No significant additional traffic is anticipated. Staff findings, the nine blocks shall include 18 parking spaces. Single two and multifamily dwellings are required per Sweet Home Municipal Code 170809081. Staff recommends the following conditions of approval pertaining to traffic. The applicant shall be able to 23rd Avenue access directly inside the walk-in apartment. One of the public comment letters mentions that three-level apartments are out of character for Sweet Home. This may have been the case in the past, however, we have multiple, we have multiple three-story apartment complexes being constructed right now. In addition to the recommended conditions of approval above, staff recommends the following additional conditions of approval. Construction and use of the multifamily dwelling be constructed in a manner consistent with the representations made by the applicant in the application during the process. The applicant shall provide a lighting plan acceptable to the Sweet Home Municipal Code requirements of 17.44.09. And the applicant shall obtain and comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. Planning Commission action, and taking action on the conditional use permit, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may enter, at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and decision, decision criteria. If approved, the planning commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff recommends conditions are included in section four. Appeal period, staff recommends the Planning Commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date of the notice of the decision as mailed. Order, after the Planning Commission makes the decision, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to send an order that is signed by the Chair of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. Move to approve application CU-20-05, which includes adopting the findings attached listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval included in section four of the staff report. The setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be sent by the Chair to memorialize this decision. Number two, move to. Number two, move to deny application CU twenty dash zero five, which includes adopting the findings attached, specified, which fact, including the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the Chair to memorialize this decision. Or three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain, specific, or other. Do you have any questions for staff?
I got a question about the ditch. How is this going to be handled? As far as the drainage and not being built up, et cetera?
We have not seen a site plan yet, uh, sufficient detail to see exactly where the building structure will sit and the parking lot will sit, but it's a pretty tight area and we'd have to see exactly where with the lot survey, the, uh, the channels would be and the building drainage will be. I looked at some LiDAR images, which are ground contour images, and a fair amount of that channel is on the adjacent properties, but there is a portion in that northeast corner of the lots. And when we get to the point of actually having some construction, uh, construction level diagrams, drawings, we'll be able to review that, that development there. It may end up as Public Works had said, you know, that there would be an easement on the property where the channel would be piped and, uh, but drainage from the building, drainage from the parking lot would all go through pollution control measures, uh, flow control before dropping into that channel. That type of thing. But like I say, it's, should it be approved, uh, we have not seen actual construction level detailed drawings yet.
And the applicant is here, so when we get to that point.
Yeah. That'd be a good question.
Any of the other commissioners have anything for the staff? Lance, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
All right. At this time, uh, we'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and, uh, state his case. And if you wouldn't mind, once you reach the table, just state your name and address.
Jim Bradford, nineteen ten South Seventh Street, Lebanon, Oregon. Currently, right now, there's an engineering firm that's doing the topography and everything for all the drainage and getting that done. Um, so they're working on that. I do have, I submitted one to the city. I don't, the site plan I had is an initial site plan.
We have attached.
Yes, this is the one, uh, this is the one that Udel Engineering had grown up for site plans where, uh, right now, we're working with the architects and the engineering company to, uh, for the building itself, and then we have another engineering firm that's doing all the topography, drainage, laterals, city fireballs, anything that's, you know, city code. I'm going to wait for that to be finalized, that should be done here. I would see within a month or two.
Will they be dealing with the wetland issue?
Yes, there's already been a wetlands delineation for it with the, with the core engineers and stuff, so that's already been taken care of.
Really?
Yes, yes. Yes, it was under fifty yards, needed to be filled in, so they, they said that there is actually no permit that needs to be gotten for that because their criteria miss fifty yards and over. Uh, and so they even detailed in there what they wanted filled with, so they're very specific value, which was very nice. And that's been given to the engineer also, so.
So you say you're working with a, a firm as far as the drainage issues and things like that?
Yes, K and D Engineering and all of it.
Have, have you guys talked anything about where you're going to try and channel rainwater? Or, I mean, are you just going to let?
We're planning on going in stormwater. We had talked, we're planning on going in the storm drain and stuff like that, and he's doing all the engineering. That's his deal.
So you plan on hard piping all the downspouts out to the storm drain?
I believe that's, yeah, yeah.
So the next question goes to Joe, and that is, is if all of those things are piped, does the city have the capacity to take care of that stormwater?
Yes, the, uh, the pipeline in Twenty-third Avenue is a pretty good-sized pipe. I think it's an eighteen, I can't remember right offhand, but, um, all of the flow that comes off of this, uh, project will be mitigated, typically in an underground wall with a controlled outlet. So what comes off the land right now in a natural condition, when it's built, nothing more of that flow that comes off. It's reinked and then relieved. So the elements of the parking lot drainage, the elements of the roof drainage, um, in commercial projects like this, uh, are mitigated. You just don't dump the entire impervious surface off into the local channel. Fifty years ago?
Yeah.
But not these days.
So it would be a combination of using the existing storm drain system and maybe a retention pond type thing, whether it's underground or exposed?
Right, right. If there's enough land, if there's enough area above ground, open pond is workable. Oftentimes, there's not enough land.
Right.
So there are below-ground, uh, compartment storage, uh, similar to what the mini stories did, um, just down the block here over at Forty-Fourth Avenue, for example, that type of thing. Perhaps not to that large a scale, you're pretty much impervious surface, corner to corner. This isn't quite that much, but some.
Anybody else have any questions for our applicant?
I think I'm good.
Any questions, Lance?
No.
No. All right. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah.
Hang around, we're going to see what we, see what else we need to discuss. Thank you. All right. Um, is there anybody else that would wish to speak in favor of the application? No? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward and just state your name and address for us.
Vince Adams, eight oh nine Mountain View Road, Sweet Home, Oregon. We are, as a family and a group up in our neighborhood, opposed to what you're doing here. Even listening to you, you don't even know what size pipe it is right now. You don't have anything hard from this guy over here as far as what he's going to do with that land. All you have is an idea and some drawn plans there. Nothing's finalized from this guy, so you don't know where it's all going to go and sit on the property. You just admitted that and what you stated and what she read out of there. You have an area that he's going to build, and so wetlands to start with. The guy below is worried about flooding his parking lot that he just redid, and then you have the possibility of flooding yards down the road. You guys don't even know if the sewage system, or not the sewage system, but the drainage system is going to fly with the extra runoff. We don't want the traffic up there, we don't want that large of a unit up there. If you were going to put a duplex, two houses in there and squeeze them in there, fine. But if you're going to shovewarn into a neighborhood, nine units, three stories tall, in a residential area, that was originally R-one, and I fought the city council and with, with the group to not let that happen, but you have what is known as a comprehensive plan. Didn't know anything about that. Nobody knows when that was, uh, last updated or last worked or anything like that, so I got to go fight them on that now. The people that came to the city council meeting, I can't round up because of the COVID thing, nobody wants to come out. But they don't want it in their neighborhood either. They're already stacked in their light court, what it is. And then you want to put nine more units up in there, three stories tall? And then how is that going to affect Mountain View? Because Mountain View is raised up here, what's that going to do for that support for the roadbed for Mountain View? You're going to do a construction in there, you're going to take out dirt, you're going to move things around and change the geology. I think it's a bad idea. He's not going to live here. He's not even from Sweet Home. But he's bought a property up in here, he's going to slam in a nine-unit, three-story-tall apartment unit, and then he's going to go away. And then we're stuck. The traffic and then the crime that it's going to bring, because we all know every time we build one of these things, the cops end up going in there after the first year or two, have to clean it up, getting phone calls, getting phone calls in these apartment complexes. That whole area was an R-one to start, and it should have stayed an R-one. You guys don't have anything to do with that, but you can stop this from happening. If he wants to put a duplex in there, fine, because you're only putting a couple of families in there, but you're going to stack nine families in that small area. It's not big enough. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And I will just remind you really quick that what we're doing here is involved in the conditional use permit of the property, and we're not, we haven't seen any detailed drawings. That stuff all has to still go through the building department and everything like that to form an approved plan, and at that time, they'll know exactly the size of the storm drain system and everything else involved. They'll know about the amount of dirt that has to be excavated versus fill brought in. All that will be apparent at that time. And as, as thankful as I am that you're here, I want to make sure that you're here for the conditional use permit and not just upset about the structure that's going to be put on the property.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
So the hearing that you're having tonight is part of the process.
Correct.
So in this particular part of the process, you're, you're going to approve or disapprove what specifically?
The conditional use. So they have to have a conditional use permit in order to put a multifamily dwelling in this area. Now, according to the zoning, it's an allowable structure.
Now it is.
Correct. So we'll discuss it. Um, you brought up some really good points. Um, so, you know, and hopefully maybe we can answer a few questions here, because it, when you're done, I'll invite our applicant to come back up and, uh, answer some of your questions and some other questions that might arise between us as commissioners.
Yeah, the bottom line is, we're just, we're seeing, there's areas in Sweet Home where if you want to put an apartment complex, you can build one as big as you want, I don't care.
Correct.
But it's in my neighborhood where my family lives, not just me, but my son and his family and some other folks, they don't want to be out here because of the COVID thing, the China virus. So I'm their, I'm their voice.
Correct.
I'm the voice for that neighborhood there. I know for a fact that some of the folks that came, uh, to the city council that live on Twenty-third fought it at the city council. But we all knew going into that, that it was going to get approved. We didn't know why until we found out about the conditional u, or not the, uh, the.
The comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that comprehensive plan, which is something that nobody on the street knows about. It's, you know, you guys, the city council, they all know that stuff or are aware of that stuff, but, you know, guys like me just found out.
Right.
So I don't, you know, and I don't understand the whole process. So I appreciate your patience with me.
Oh, absolutely.
In, in this process. Uh, now I have a better understanding of how you guys operate, but yes, I do want to be notified for the next process, that's part of the process.
And I, I think we can, we can take care of that.
If I can answer that.
Yeah.
So, um, so as far as this process goes, so anybody that was here at this meeting goes, whatever decision is made, you'll get copies of this. Now, building, when, when building plans are submitted, until permits are approved, until the permits go out, it's actually not public knowledge until, or not public.
Record.
Record, until the permit is issued. So we can go through, and we have a very stringent process. He will submit the plans and, and like Commissioner Parker was correct, when it comes to this, we're just approving what the condition use is, not the building itself. Once that comes into us, um, engineering, planning, and building all have a checklist. We have to go through each one of it, we each have criteria that we have to review before we sign off on it, before the permit ever gets issued. So it's, it's, this is just the initial, it's allowed, but it's allowed as a conditional use, then depending on what the decision of this is, it comes in, there's a lot because of, there's a lot of different things that have to be checked off in order for it to get approved. So just so you know that, until that permit is issued, um, we don't give out those plans. And so that, that information.
So I guess I would ask the question, if you do not approve, which I'm, I'm assuming you guys are going to, but if you do not approve, then what's, then, then what does that change? If you don't approve this part of the process?
Well, the only way this could not, so as far as approving and dis, just approving and not approving, you have to go by the criteria. So if all of the criteria have been met with the conditional use, the conditional use process either is approved or not approved, but it has to be, if it's not approved, they have to be able to find something in.
Something in there.
In the criteria that doesn't fit.
Okay.
The criteria. Now, when it comes to the building plans, which is a totally different thing, we go through each of our little processes, Joe goes through a lot of the infrastructure, I go through the site itself, Molly goes through the building portion. Though, that's when we go back and forth with the applicant, saying, no, this doesn't comply, you'll have to go back and resubmit this, or yes, this complies, we sign off on it. So it's, it's not an overnight process.
Right, and I understand that.
Yeah. So this, this, yeah, like I said, this has nothing to do with the building itself. We just want to make sure that, you know, that the comments that we've received have been talked about, the drainage, make sure that we are talking about, because they have the ability to put more conditions of approval. Here's some extra things that need to be put in there in order to make it go through. So they actually have, um, that right to, the conditions of approval that I read, they can either add, delete, or keep the, the same. So just to kind of give you a little bit more about the planning portion of it.
All right, thanks for your time, I appreciate the explanations.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, at this time, I'll invite our applicant back up for some rebuttal.
I'd like, one thing to be known real clearly is, is that I've, I've invested a lot of retirement, my retirement in this, in this property and, uh, for this, I've actually, unbeknownst probably to some of the proprietors, I've actually owned this property for about ten years. So I have been a good neighbor when it comes to that, um, and I haven't had any issues with that. With, with the fact of this, improving the lighting down there where it's at, actually, because we would have proper lighting in the entryways and, and like, uh, Ms. Clay said, we would have to go through a vetting process for everything, for drainage, lighting, uh, everything. So, um, it, it, it's not one of those where you build it and it's flying away and it's done. My mom lives in Sweet Home on another property that I own. I live in Lebanon, so I very much care about this place. I, uh, I frequent these lakes, I enjoy the beautiful fresh air, and it wouldn't be behoove me of us to operate a business, so to speak, with riffraff. All residents are expected to sign a contract that will have to deal with noise, uh, you know, police involved, regulations, uh, everything. That's part of the deal. So I'm very much vested in this and, and to have a nice units. And something that we will also allow, because I'm disabled myself, so I actually can relate to this, is that we, we plan on, even though it's not required, we're, we're planning on offering ADA units on the first floor for people that have disabilities like me. So I'm very much invested and concerned about it.
Do you, and this is an early on question, obviously, and it's something that would happen later in the building department if it were to go through. Do you have any idea topographically, the, the height difference between Twenty-third and Mountain View?
I, I don't, that'd be something that you'd have to give with the engineers. I know that, uh, I know that Grant of K and D has already, they've already set out the top graph of guys to do the pins, they've already set the property lines, found the drainage and stuff, and it opened and cleared that up, so that's already in the works going. Um, I don't know the difference. Uh, the way that we planned on initially on the site plan, the one that she had, is the building's actually away from the hill, and we're avoiding the hill. The other thing is too, is there's another property that goes up that hill, which isn't ours, which is, so we're trying to stay away from the hill, obviously, because at a certain height, you have to. at a certain height, you have to do retaining walls and stuff like that.
Correct.
And that stuff gets really expensive. So we just want to stay away from that as much as we can. We kind of fast forward.
I'm just wondering, because I noticed in one of the drawings, it said, you know, you're, you're anticipating the, the height to be about 36 feet? For, for the third, the peak of the third story. I'm just wondering what we have, Joe, you might know, the difference between in elevation between between Mountain View and 23rd?
Pretty high, about
I was going to say.
Probably in the 25 foot range.
So as far as, as, as an opposing view from Mountain View, it's not going to be super obtrusive?
Yeah, it's probably in the order between
So maximum height for multifamily dwellings are 40 feet.
Right. My, my main thing, I guess, would be, I guess I was looking at an aesthetic concern from Mountain View. So, I mean, you're more likely to look over the top of this than you are to look into the sidewall.
It is about 40 feet.
Is it?
Yeah. Plus or minus the Google
Right.
Accuracy.
Right.
Which is actually pretty good. It's approximately 30 feet.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions again for our applicant?
I might have a couple more.
Okay.
Obviously you'll have some kind of a cul-de-sac. Is that going to permit a fire truck? Are we meeting those requirements?
It's smaller than the standard requirements as is, but this also was constructed quite a while ago, probably, I don't remember exactly, but probably about 40 years. The cul-de-sacs at that time were pretty small, typically about 60 feet. Nowadays, they're 90 plus. Curve to curve, without any special exceptions. They're significantly bigger.
Will accommodate a fire truck.
Yeah, after 23rd and Ironwood, it's section four, but they'd have to turn around there. They're allowed to turn around.
Right. And, and in the practical, the practicality of, of a fire action being taken there, discussions with the fire chief over other projects indicate that they would not bring a fire truck in that close. They could, they could back out. But preferably, they tend to stay at the intersections and then go in with hose lines. They can back out after everything is over. So they probably would go there, but they wouldn't try to turn around. I, I don't imagine. I'm speaking from private conversations with
That probably is what I remember.
Yeah. It's a, it's a small, it's a small turn area. The other cul-de-sac around the corner at 23rd Court, 22nd Court, is much larger, much more standard. Don't know why this one was different at the time of construction. Predates all of us being here.
Okay. Then I have one more there. Seemed to have been a little discussion in here about whether to require half-street improvements on Mountain View. I would like to see at least a non-remontion so that when Mountain View is, you know, we're up there by the junior high and at some point we should have some sidewalks and half-street improvement.
Right. If there was any kind of access on the Mountain View Road, this project would require that frontage having sidewalks and adequate
But it doesn't seem to have any frontage on Mountain View.
The property line is on Mountain View.
Just the property line frontage.
Somebody's going to have to help with the street and the sidewalk at some time.
At some time.
So how does this compare to another project that was up, I believe Grape? Up Grape, and they've had to improve and put sidewalk in on 18th. The down below section, there's, there's a chunk of sidewalk that's about 60 feet, 70 feet long.
Right. That corner there, northwest corner of Grape Court and 18th.
Right.
That was, that was not developed at the time until a home was built.
Right.
The property owner who built that home there was required to build those sidewalks there.
Right, but, but not because they have access to 18th. They had to do it because they got their building permit and then they had to do the improvement.
Yeah, they had to do the improvements. They had the frontage onto the public street.
So this would kind of fall in the same category because their property has frontage on Mountain View.
Right, but they also, they don't necessarily have a driveway access.
Oh, nor does the one on 18th.
You know.
18th is on a hill. And there's no way, no, anybody's driving up it. So.
Well, at some point.
I see 18th Loop.
No, well, it's 18th. Yeah, Grape Loop.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah.
I was thinking the other.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Because that subdivision, because that is a subdivision, was a subdivision. When a home goes in, then the subdivision infrastructure that was supposed to have been built a long time ago gets built at that time. And yes, there's getting into the weeds, there's a little bit of a differential between an unimproved street that has a curb does not have a curb.
Okay.
And so that's why up on Grape Loop, they have a development agreement for that loop road. But they had curb line down below also on a collector street, but primarily because it was part of that subdivision that with that curb, they built that incremental segment of the sidewalk about 65 feet long.
Right.
Between a group of weeds and trees to another group of weeds and trees.
Correct.
And yes, it will be infilled. If the house that's right next to them or the property right next to them does the same thing, they get to do the same thing.
Right.
Be another increment of the sidewalk there. But that's where there was a subdivision in construction that did the entirety of Grape Loop. This particular property here was segmented out by minor land partition. Doesn't follow under the subdivision rules.
Well, since I brought up the subject, I'd like to see some kind of a an agreement that when that time comes, that they would be willing to participate in a street and sidewalk.
Yeah.
Along Mountain View.
On Mountain View.
Yeah.
Just because it happens to be a backyard instead of a front yard means that, okay, so we'll have a section that we don't have a sidewalk in. And I, I think we need to build that into our approval tonight.
It is something in the long term because Mountain View Road is a collector street and gets a fair amount of traffic and Exactly. And with pedestrian access, it would be made safer. So we would have a development agreement. We're looking to try to get some construction built there, but it takes time. Great opportunities.
But I believe a development agreement could be included as, as a condition of
Anybody else have anything they'd like to ask our applicant?
I have one.
I tried to find, oh, sorry, Henry. I did try to find the pipeline size there on 23rd. But I'm not connecting to the interior, to the inside network in the building, and I can't get to my file, but such as
Okay. You had one last thing, Henry?
I just kind of go back on my memory. A number of years ago, one of the multifamily units a little further down 23rd had backup of sewage.
Yes.
Turned to their house. That was the days of Bob Rader. But I think we want to be sure that there's adequate sanitary sewer capacity to have this many units.
Right.
That's your job.
Yeah. Yeah. They, they had a private lateral backup issue. It wasn't part of the city mains. But it is something that we continually monitor to make sure the sewer system doesn't run.
Do you know the size of the main there on 23rd?
Eight.
Eight inch.
All right. If nobody has any further questions, we'll close the public hearing at 7:26 and for discussion amongst commissioners. Thank you. Anybody have any thoughts burning in their head?
I think one of the conditions of approval needs to deal with the number three, the creek channel. Neighbors about in that area.
So just maybe, yeah, that is condition number three. Yeah, those are the recommended, if you want anything more or less or added to it.
Okay.
That is in there, but if you want something added to that condition?
Such as the, the sidewalk plan for
Yeah, development agreement for, for future construction of sidewalk on Mountain View.
Yeah, so if you look, recommending condition number two is 23rd Avenue. Right now, it's just a 23rd Avenue sidewalk, so.
So that would be number six? Condition number six?
Or you would
Or just add it to two?
Just add it to which one?
Two. One thing to, to understand though, is that condition number two is that the applicant will develop that access driveway and sidewalks when the apartments develop. Whereas if you include that, if you include Mountain View in that condition, what you're doing then is you're going to have a stretch of sidewalk right only on his property on Mountain View. And so you'd have a, a sidewalk to nowhere. Which, if that's what you wanted, want to say, that's, that's fine. But what we often do in situations like that is have a development agreement with the property owner that essentially says, okay, property owner, someday in the future, this is going to be improved, and we want a commitment from you that you're going to participate at that time in the construction of the sidewalk.
Right.
So you don't end up with a sidewalk to nowhere until later when that construction happens.
And by doing it that way, you're, you're preventing it looking like a patchwork quilt.
Right.
Where everything's constructed at one time.
Whereas, so, so if you, if you want to add that condition in number two, number two is, is all
Now.
Developments that are, that are required when the apartments are constructed. My, if you, if you want to include that development agreement, my recommendation would be to add another condition that there be a development agreement for the construction of the sidewalk on Mountain View.
So create a number six.
Number six.
Number six.
So, because currently the sidewalk runs as far as the church property up there, is that correct? And then it stops? Yeah, it just stops at the edge of their property.
The house just past the house.
Yeah, okay, yes, there is a house there.
The development agreement sounds good to me. Yeah, we're, we're good with that.
Didn't realize the desk was on wheels. My main concerns were the water, was the water issue, but it sounds like things are going to be hard piped to the storm drain system. There's water mitigation on site.
Yeah, I was concerned about that, but that seems like that's going to be taken care of between the city and the applicant.
Yeah, as far as the allowable easement to the back of the property. The apartments right next to this property are two-story currently, correct? One's in the adjacent property to the north. I'm just kind of wondering if a two-story wouldn't be more fitting for the neighborhood versus a three?
Comment. I would agree with you, but if
Is within.
Complies with what currently the city rules, we probably don't have any say on that.
Well, yeah. But we are issuing the conditional use permit.
And we are compliant with building heights.
Yeah, the maximum height for multifamilies, 40 feet.
How much?
What is the height of this building?
I believe it's 36. According to the current information we have, I believe it's 36. Yeah. It's, I think it's on his site plan, yeah. A height of, a height of 36. Granted, that can fluctuate depending upon excavation. No, go ahead.
What's happening in here is when we go to, but when he submits, Mr. Bradford submits the site plans, that is something that is part of my checklist because I have to check it, make sure I look at all the heights, the widths, how is it covered. So that is something that I will have to verify that the site plans reflect that, so.
So anybody else, you have anything you'd like to add, Lance, or?
Yeah, I think, well, first, I guess it'd be interesting to clarify whether or not you could put a restriction of two stories on the building. Because I'm not sure about that. Does anybody know?
They're humming and hawing in the corner here.
I didn't see anything in the code about the number of stories, just the
Just the height.
The height is 40.
The, the code does say that in approving a conditional use permit, the planning commission may impose, in addition to those standards and requirements expressly specified by this chapter, additional conditions determined to be determined to be necessary to assure that the proposed development meets the decision criteria as well as the best interests of the surrounding properties and neighborhood and the city as a whole. These conditions may include, but are not limited to, the following, and then it says limiting the building height, size, or lot coverage or location on the site. So you do have some discretion in that area. If it's something that you feel helps the proposed development meet the decision criteria and the best interests of the surrounding properties and neighborhood and the city as a whole. That being said, chain, limiting the building height does, of course, have an impact on, on how many units can be in that building.
Correct.
The, it can be manufactured, or not manufactured, multifamily building is a conditional use in this zone, but also it's limited to a certain number of square feet. You could have a certain number of units per square foot of, of space on, of lot size. And so in this, in this particular, when we met with the applicant earlier And so in this, in this particular, when we met with the applicant earlier, when he was first planning this, there was a reduction in the number of units, because. Per the code, nine units is the most you can possibly have in this, given the, the square footage of the, of the lot. So. With the parking requirements and other issues, it is, it would probably have an effect on that. Given the conditions of the site and the topography, I, I don't know that he would have the option of just enlarging the, the lower two floors to compensate for that loss of a third floor.
He did have to reduce by three, because we do require two parking spaces per unit, plus the required square footage. I haven't pulled up right now, but I think it's 2,500 square feet per unit, I think, if I remember properly.
That's big.
So I can't, I can't get my phone to come up.
Yeah.
I bring that up mainly just to make you aware of, of, of the backstory, it's, it's within your, the planning commission.
I think I do remember seeing something in the past of a, a larger proposal at some point in its initial stages.
Mr. Jennings, I also want to let you know, I. I was able to find what the storm drain is.
Oh.
23rd Avenue is 24 inch line.
Oh, one of the big ones.
So I guess I could go either way with the two-story versus three-story question, since it's allowed. And then I would just suggest that all the conditions of approval, plus the one that Henry added. For a, a street improvement agreement, all be included.
I, I'm kind of leaning toward a more of a two-story thing, just to kind of fit in with the neighborhood, but. There's two-story ones next door. It wouldn't be as obtrusive, obviously not from Mountain View, you're not hardly going to see it anyway, but as far as being down on 23rd and, and Ironwood.
We're going to go that direction, I would recommend you. Limit the discussion to actual height. Stories vary.
Correct.
From one building to another, and so. We, it expressly says that limiting the building height is, is within, is a possible condition. Doesn't necessarily mean, it would say that limiting the number of stories is within.
Okay.
Do you know the height of the. Newby apartment for two stories, do you know the height? Doesn't your laptop have that, Joe?
Come on, Google.
We, we sure are spoiled these days with our technology, Lance. Can't get an answer to something.
Uh, Google knows what we're doing.
Probably in the order of 22, 24 feet high.
Yeah.
Looks like a 612 roof pitch on two stories, probably typical eight-foot ceiling, a foot or two of structure in between, and then a 612 roof pitch. Probably in the order of 24, 25.
You're going to use that against me.
Earlier question about the, in the code, it says, single-family attached dwellings shall have a minimum lot area of 4,800 square feet per dwelling unit.
That's single-family attached, that's different, you need to look at multifamily, that's what you're looking for.
Multifamily.
I believe it's 2,500.
For single-family, two-family dwellings and single-family attached dwellings.
Are you in the median?
The applicant's got his hand out.
Personally, we're closed right now for the public hearing. It's up to you guys if we reopen it, but.
Well, maybe out of here, what has he got to say?
Is that good with you guys? Okay, we're going to reopen a public hearing at 7:40 for additional comment. Go ahead and come on forward.
The reason we came to the, the site plan we did was because of the unusualness of the property, it's kind of a unique piece. And the other factor is for the three stories, if we went to two-story, it'd severely affect the value of the property. We were, if we, if we don't stay to our three-story and we're trying to spread out on there, now we're entering into the hill, now we have more geology issues there. So when this was engineered, when this was done, it was actually done. By the engineer to see what would be maximum, you know, that we could put on here but stay away from the hill. We already had revised it down from 12 units, nine units, and because it is such an usual property, the way the, the lots are shaped, that's why we came to this, and that, and stay away from the hillside. Because of the property, because it is a unique piece. To answer your question.
Yeah. Anybody have anything they'd like to ask the applicant again while he's here?
So if you were restricted to two stories, it would have stayed the same, or would you try and spread it out?
We'd have to talk to an engineer, and we've already, like I said, we already had it engineered when we approached the city with what we're able to do. And, and then we had to re-engineer it again from the 12plex, because Angela had brought up the fact that there was a square footage, it was short by a certain amount, so we had to, to redo that, so. That's why we tried to stick with narrowing the way the building is, so we're away from any streams and stuff, we're away from the hill, we, but we have adequate, you know, parking and everything else. And I'm worried that that would kind of, if, if we tried to spread out because of the unusualness of the lot, the way it is, and it's kind of an L lot, then it would obviously incur some problems with that.
And also to answer the question to the, so in our three zone, because it's a conditional use, you have to go over to the R2 zone for the multifamily criteria, and that is the minimum lot area for a multifamily dwelling to be 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit. Mr. Blondo, is he correct, so you're not bouncing back and forth?
Yeah.
Thank you, yes. And that's where Mr. Bradford was limited, because once we got counting the square footage plus the two parking spots per, he didn't want to cut into the hillside, which is where he ended up having to reduce it because of the inadequate square footage for the complex.
Chairman. One other thing to consider on building height is, in this, if it was a two-family building, a duplex, or single-family attached dwellings, such as a, a.
Correct.
Of townhomes, then, and that would be permitted use in, in the zone, wouldn't be, wouldn't be discussing it if you was doing that. Those buildings have a height restriction of 40 feet in the, in, in our code. So, obviously, these are different buildings.
Right.
But just to, to provide some context, that if you wanting to put a, a height restriction on something, you could conceivably have something that tall without it even coming to you. The only reason why it's coming to you now is because it's a multifamily instead of a, a row of townhomes.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to address the applicant with? Close the hearing back up.
Okay, applicant.
Okay.
For our discussions.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to close the public hearing again at 7:45. Henry?
I would like to see a two-story unit, but I think he is compliant with a three, and I think that we have to go with that if that's what his desire is, that's my feeling. I do think that we need to add the development agreement for Mountain View Road, and with those two exceptions, we're good to go.
Are you saying you're good with three?
He's good with the 30, the proposed 36 feet.
We're at a height that's okay.
Yeah, we're at a height that we, we could be less, or it gets less than what we could, could have been.
Right, and I think the thing that Blair brought up is, this is how it just happens to be an apartment block, and it's 36 feet high, if it was three townhomes, they could be 40 feet high, but with four townhomes, you also don't get a giant parking lot and more people, so. Well, it is true that if it was three townhomes, we wouldn't be seeing this because it's permissible, the fact is that it is a multifamily, and it does require conditional use permit. So.
I don't see a reason to lower the height requirement.
Greg, you have anything to add to that, or?
Uh, no. I think with the, the conditions that the staff recommended and Henry's recommendation on the development plan, I think, I think it looks good.
Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Lance. I looked down there. Do you have anything you'd like to add before we look at going to a vote?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay. All right.
I'm kind of curious what Greg's thinking, though.
Say again?
He's curious to think what, to hear what Greg's thinking.
I already told you what I was thinking.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion that we approve the conditional use. With these conditions. Number one, the construction and use of the multifamily dwelling will be. In a manner consistent with the representations made by the applicant in the application and the hearing process. Two, the applicant shall develop the 23rd Avenue access driveway and sidewalks upon development of the apartments. And we'll add to that that there will be a development agreement. That if and when Mountain View is developed, that they will participate in the cost of half-street improvements and sidewalks and curbs and gutters.
Can we have that added as, as number six?
Added as a number.
That's number six. Number three, applicant shall work with the city of Sweet Home to create a maintenance plan to keep the creek channel cleared of debris and create a public utility usement to accommodate the stormwater drainage and maintenance. The applicant will comply with all applicable state and city requirements for the stormwater drainage and wetland mitigation. Four, the applicant shall provide a lighting plan acceptable to the Sweet Home Municipal Code requirements of 17 dot 44 dot 090. Five, the applicant shall obtain and comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. And number six, that he will enter into a development agreement for half-street improvements, including. Curbs, gutters, and sidewalks on Mountain View when that street is developed.
I second that motion.
Nay.
You said nay?
Nay.
Mr. Wolfius?
Yay.
Mr. Gatchel?
Hi.
Mr. Stevens?
Hi.
Mr. Corne?
Hi.
Mr. Amber? Five ayes, one nay, and one absent.
All right. Excuse me. Thank you for your time, gentlemen, and to discuss other issues as a planning commission together, but thank you for coming down.
Appreciate my execution, Lance, thank you. Appreciate what you did.
You got security cameras out there, right? Yeah. Good. All right.
Hi. So to update you then on staff updates, development code, we just finished reviewing the second draft from the consultant of the development code. He's pretty swamped right now, but my understanding is that the third draft that will come out of that is the one that will come before you. So stay tuned, I don't think that'll make it on the November, the December meeting, but I'm thinking the, the January meeting is when we start that review. Other planning projects, we, as we mentioned, I mentioned before the meeting started, we recently put out the request for proposals for our streetscape and parking plan that we're trying to do. That's for an area, basically for the downtown area of Main Street and Long Street corridors. The idea behind that project is to get a, a consistent plan in that area that would dictate. Location of street furniture, location and type of landscaping, artwork, lighting, signage, all the stuff that you would typically have in a, in a walkable downtown area. This is intended to be a plan to accomplish that in phases. Along with that, we are asking the proposers to also generate a parking plan, because we're recognizing that in some areas, we will be losing, we'll have to use the right of way to do it, and we may be losing some on-street parking to make room for a tree in this location, or, or something like that. And so we want to make sure that that's replaced elsewhere, or that we have a plan for replacing that parking elsewhere, whether that be agreements with property owners for use of, that, that certain areas will be public parking, or whether it be city.
Outright purchase, oh.
You know, some, some passion of making sure that there's enough parking in those areas. So that's where, the stage where we basically put it out into the world, and we'll see what companies, what firms respond. I've already had a couple of conversations by, by phone with, with some firms that have said that they're definitely going to put in a proposal. My only concern is how much it costs, but it, it'll be positive, I'm, I'm actually really quite excited about this, it doesn't necessarily get me around, but it gives us what we have lacked for quite a while, which is a consistent plan of exactly what's going to be put in place in the. In, in the public right of way. Henry, I think some of your mentions before with the alleyway development and stuff like that, that you've given me copies of, I think, I, I encourage you to, in, in the public meetings that we have, to bring up some of those things, because some of that stuff can be, can be, it's, it's right up this alley. And I think it, it, it could really take us that direction, which would be good. So that's, that's in the works. Other good news is, we recently were notified that we have received a grant from the state, it's a TGM grant, it's Transportation Growth Management, which is a, a joint division between ODOT and the Department of Land Conserv. ODOT and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. But they, this TGM program is essentially devoted toward helping cities make the connection between planning and transportation. And so this particular grant is going to help us update our transportation system plan, which is really, a really good thing to have that, have some, it's been a little while since it's been done, and so it's, it'll be good to get that modernized. But also, there will be a planning aspect to it of kind of going over the northern part of Sweet Home with the undeveloped property along the river, to kind of look at uses of that land and making sure that we have a transportation plan of serving all that land. As you know, we've talked about those properties a lot in the past, and there are a few things that this, that we, as a city, we want to make sure that transportation-wise, we are really making best use of the railroad, and that we are making sure that there is a east-west link north of the railroad, so that you don't have somebody in one side of the, of the city having to cross the railroad tracks, drive east on Highway 20, and then go north over the railroad tracks. Again, we want to kind of limit those kinds of trips, making sure that things are more direct, and we can hopefully limit rail crossings and have a good plan for how those are gonna be updated and made safe. So, it's, that'll be a rather long-term project, but it's nice to know that it's, that we've gotten some money to pay for it, so.
Going, going back to the street improvements thing, is that something that's only open to, like, design firms, or are you entertaining layouts from, from community members or groups, or...
The RFP is, is sent out, is asked for qualified firms, so there's, there's essentially engineering and landscape architecture firms to submit proposals. But the RFP also knows that they should be planning on a public process for these, for this plan to go forth. I imagine what, what will probably happen was there will be some initial drafts that the, there will be some meetings with staff and the council and possibly the planning commission that these firms will go through, you know, whatever firm is chosen, will go through some meetings there first, develop some initial plans, and then have some public comment meetings to look at those initial plans. So, any, any citizen involved, any citizens who want to be involved, of course, can, we can include them on the, on the notification list of meetings and things like that, because these are all gonna be public meetings. But also, those, those public hearings will likely have an opportunity for citizens to kind of voice support for elements that they would like to see included. So, let's, uh, on my side of things, Andrew can probably update you on what applications are pending.
Yes. I almost forgot, so I have to go back and write my list. All right, so right now, we have a zone map amendment, which you guys will be seeing in December, I think. Pretty sure we have everything in, so a zone map amendment and plan development by Good Faith Management. It's a seven-lot development right off Ninth Avenue. So it's right past the storage units between Inch Creek and the railroad. So there's a swath of land right there that right now is just a bunch of plants. So they are proposing, they'll be doing the zone map amendment, which wants, if approved by you guys, will have to go in front of council for three readings. And then the plan development, you guys will approve their plan development plan, which you'll be seeing, Fisher, in December, so that's something. More houses, more, this is a smaller one, it's only seven units, but, you know, they've got a lot of wetland area down there, so they could only, that was as many as they could fit in there with Inch Creek and the wetland and the flood plain. So, partition, or P1907, actually it's property line adjustment, City 24th Avenue is still pending, we're still waiting for its DEQ, right? So, that one is ongoing, pending until we get our report. So, we have a partition 20 dash 09, right now, it's off of Tammerack, it is, we just sent out a letter, it's incomplete, there's some issues with a previous partition, we're determining whether it was a legal partition or not, so we may have another partition, but we're just waiting for a petition for that one. And then our property line adjustments, 20 dash 07 through 20 dash 010, the wastewater treatment plant, comment period ended Friday, so I will be starting the staff reports for them and getting that written up. There were no comments that came in negatively on them, so we did have a gentleman that lives right next door just coming in and asking about it, because it's confusing when you see the multiple different ones turning into one. And then just today, we have a subdivision application turned in for a 46-lot subdivision right here off Highway 20, right behind the old Radiator Supply Shop. Yes. Had to think visually in my head.
The old what?
Is that the one that accesses off, behind the fir apartments or whatever, that little street there?
45th.
Forty, 45th, but the apartments are like fir tree apartments or some...
It's the little road that's right there.
That little chunk, dead end.
Yeah, so that one was just submitted today, and it's in review right now. So we've got a couple subdivisions, a couple apartment complexes, and we have potentially a lot of buildings gonna be going on.
That's a lot of lots in one year.
So right now, that's it.
I better refinance my house before property values come down.
All right, Gwen, another comment?
There's other reasons.
Yeah. Somebody gonna talk? We just completed some structural changes in the laundromat and completed two apartments upstairs, and after all the frustrations that everybody has with the city, including me, I'd like to invite you, any of you that would like to come, I'll be around there tomorrow. I'd love to show you what we did.
What, free ice cream?
Wait, wait, why did I get...
I saw you working on it.
But you know what? If I give any of them an ice cream, then it's bribes.
That's right.
Not you.
But you're already done.
But I'm already done.
Well, it's not a bribe, so there's...
So it's just, there you go. I tell you what, though, my kids think your ice cream shop is great.
And I'd be happy to show you what's...
You did a nice job, I've seen it.
You did, yeah.
Well, we want to encourage more of that, too.
Yeah.
It's good development.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, so just keep an eye out, because we've got a lot coming up with the Decollo subdivision, we already approved, and the subdivision, and then the progress on the Long Street.
And I would just like to make a plug for our city and individuals making, working on Sankey Park. When you drive home this evening, take a look at what you see.
Yeah.
In Sankey Park, you know, if you can drive by, do it while it's dark, it's the important element. With the public works through and Angela's projects and, and whole design, it's looking pretty sweet out there. Drive in by at night for a quick view.
All right.
It's a whole little park.
Maybe people will stop calling it what they used to call it, so.
That's the goal.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and close, close the meeting at 8:04.
So I've got a, I've got something to say to you guys.
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you, Jeff, for bringing up that idea of making the building a little bit smaller to help make it...
Yeah.
Don't be discouraged with that, but I thought that was, I thought that was a good, a good thought, just hard for the property owner to make ends meet, maybe. So, and the other thing is, is that I just bought a house out on Croppardsville Drive, so I'm gonna move.
Aw.
Have a planning commissioner spot, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I got it. When you moving?
Yep, I'm not gonna qualify anymore, and my term's up in December.
So you're gonna make December's meeting, though?
Yeah.
Or do you think you're moving, oh, okay. Oh, great, all right, so...
I'll let Julie know.
Well, the good thing is, there are a lot, bunch, there's a bunch of people vying for council seats in tomorrow's election.
They're not gonna get 'em.
There's gonna be some losers.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be like the girls that didn't make cheerleading go for dance.
Are you saying this is... Are you saying we're made up of the losers? Is that what you're saying, or what?
I meant that in the best possible, no, what I meant was, what I meant was... There's lots of, there's people who want to be involved.
Freudian slip.
And planning commission flies under the radar sometimes, people don't realize it's an option.
Well, we'll, we'll be sad to see you go, Lance, it's been, it's been really good having you and your insight, and it's been nice.
Yeah, I think it's been like 13 years.
Has it really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
That's amazing.
Time passes by.
It's only been 13 years.
Yep, it's been 13 years.
There's a couple of you that already live outside of city limits, right? There's, isn't there, isn't there, I think the...
You're allowed to.
Yeah, we get to.
People can be, as long as they're within the school district boundaries.
So I think Ava's outside.
No, she's not.
Oh, she's not?
She lives in the city, I'm outside.
You are, yeah, just.
They're backyard neighbors, but he's outside.
But she's in the city.
You know, Eva just moved outside the city, too.
Oh, she did?
Yeah, she's at Meridian Heights, behind Pleasant Valley.
I never talked with her about it.
Yeah.
We'll have to do some figuring out and some make sure we're okay, but who, is there anyone else who lives outside city limits?
No.
Just me.
So you and...
And Ava.
If Ava's moving.
Oh, she's already moved. She bought Alice Smith's old house.
Yeah.
Well, before we do any resigning of anything, let's double-check on that.
Okay. Yeah, I think he's getting tired, though, look at him. He's like, I'm done with you guys.
I gotta do what I can.
We don't want to lose you, Lance, it's just that simple.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that.
Well, keep us posted on what actually happens, and if you did sell your house, then you probably got a good price for it, so I can't fault you for that.
Where are you moving?
I'm gonna sell our house.
We're actually...
Oh, you're gonna rent it?
Yep.
So you technically still own that address.
You bend a rule too much, it breaks.
Did you know what the other rule is?
Uh-oh.
People vote, businesses cannot vote.
Yeah.
Which doesn't make sense and isn't fair, but that's the way it always is. All of these people that own property and pay taxes in Sweet Home, and if they live outside of the city, they're not voters.
Yeah. Well, okay. All righty.
Well, we're excited, it's a little, it's a little five-acre piece with a farmhouse on it and a barn and lots of pasture and stuff, so it's gonna be...
Oh, wow. Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Well, thank you, guys.
They got fun in the last minute.